Excuse me, as the mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular town council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton, for it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
None from staff tonight.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Up next, under introduction and special presentation is the recognition of Boy Scout Troop 57. We're very excited to have you in our council chamber this evening. Thank you for joining us. A little bit about Troop 57. They were chartered about 14 years ago with boys from Troop 33 and Troop 24. Their charter organized is Holy Cross Lutheran Church, located on Highway 42. They meet Sundays at 6:30, and they have typically been a smaller sized troop, but they have had 16 Eagle Scouts with plans to add another five this year, which I think is a major accomplishment. We enjoy, they enjoy many exciting campouts and adventures, including their annual ski trip. I'm assuming that's snow skiing. Yeah, enjoy that while you're young. And camping on Shackelford Banks, visits to Carr Lake, the North Carolina Zoo, Camp Tuscarora, and going to Darlington for the NASCAR race in September. So, we thank you so much for being here. We thank you for your service to our communities, and if you would stand, we'd like to welcome you. Thank you. Up next, under introduction and special presentation will be student art proclamation, and I believe we have someone here from the Women's Club of Clayton.
Mr. Mayor, member of the town council and Clayton citizens, on behalf of the Women's Club of Clayton and Greater Federation of Women's Club of North Carolina, I am here to ask for a proclamation to designate the month of February as Student Art Month. The Women's Club sponsors the students of Clayton area schools each February by displaying their work in the Clayton Center Gallery and hosting a reception and an awards ceremony. This year, the festival will be Thursday, February 8th at 6:00 PM. There are six schools from the Clayton area that will be represented this year, and their work is already hanging in the gallery if you want to look at it as you go out. We invite Major McLeod, council members, and Clayton citizens to attend the festival to celebrate the creative art of our students.
Awesome, and I have a proclamation I would like to share with everybody, and at the completion of this, I'd like to have my picture, our picture made with you for that. Town of Clayton proclamation, Student Art Month. Whereas the arts in many forms constitute an important part of the community and contribute to the development of our youth, and whereas participation in and enjoyment of the arts can take many forms, including the visual arts, fine arts, and performing arts, and whereas the Women's Club of Clayton has sought to promote the involvement of our youth in various art projects to the betterment of their minds and the community as a whole, now therefore let it be proclaimed by the Honorable Mayor and the Town Council of the Town of Clayton that the month of February each year be recognized as Student Art Month. Let it also be proclaimed that all businesses, industries, and citizens in the Clayton community are urged to support and encourage the school-aged children of Clayton to participate in the arts proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council this 5th day of February 2024. Thank you. Up next will be the National School Resource Office Day proclamation. The Town of Clayton proclamation, National School Resource Officer Day. Whereas the National Association of School Resource Officers is dedicated to making schools and children safer by providing the highest quality training to school-based law enforcement officers, and whereas school resource officers bridge gaps between youth and law enforcement and embrace a triad concept of school policing, serving in informal counseling, education, and law enforcement roles to support students and communities they serve. Whereas the training law enforcement officers to counsel, educate, and protect school communities, the men and women of NASRO continuously lead by example and promote a positive image of law enforcement to schoolchildren and school communities. And whereas SRO programs across the globe are founded as collaborative efforts by police agencies, law enforcement officers, educators, students, parents, and communities to create a safe learning environment, providing valuable resources to school staff members, fostering positive relationships with students, and develop strategies to resolve problems that affect youth with the goal of protecting all children so they can reach their fullest potential. And whereas school resource officers are valuable and essential members of the education community and deserve unwavering respect and support from the public in the pursuit of keeping schools and students safe. And now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I, Mayor McLeod, hereby proclaim February 15th, 2024, as National School Resource Officer Day, a special day to show appreciation for school-based law enforcement officers and to encourage all citizens to show their gratitude with displays of support and personal messages proclaimed this 5th day of February 2024. And I am super proud to be able to say that every school in Town of Clayton has got a SRO officer in it, and I think that is due to great visionary leadership and the support of the elected officials. So, all of our police officers and national school resource officers, if you would join me down front, let's get a big picture of this, and let's have a nice round of applause for these folks.
To keep our schools safe and our schoolchildren safer.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to quickly introduce our school resource officers to you all and what schools that they are currently assigned. This is Miguel Duran. He is Johnston Charter, which is our newest school. Jalise Ferris is at Clayton High School. Alex Woodall is at West Clayton Elementary.
All right, let's see what we got. Yeah, I was in it. Yeah, just fall forward. Did you hear that one?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Want to hear? We didn't have SRO officers chief tart at Clayton High School back in our day. Better. Probably a good thing, wasn't it? Yeah. And last but not least, under introduction and special presentation tonight, we'd like to read a proclamation for Engineers Week. Town of Clayton proclamation, Engineers Week. Whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment, and ensuring safe, clean, and effective resources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. Whereas engineers are encouraging our youth, our young youth in math and science, students realize their practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. And now therefore let it be proclaimed, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, I, Jody McLeod, Mayor of the Town of Clayton, do hereby proclaim February 18th through the 24th, 2024, be recognized as Engineers Week proclaimed this 5th day of February 2024 while in regular session. And if I could be joined by all our good engineers down front, that would be fantastic. And they got a lot of nicknames in, on our side of the fence over here, but I can tell you right now, we are nothing without our engineers, including management.
Mayor, members of town council, if I may, I want to say I appreciate the support, appreciate the recognition. This, this group of gentlemen and ladies here certainly are passionate about what they do, and they take it seriously. They come to work, they know the reason why they're here, whether it be on the environmental side, keeping sediment out of streams or storm water. They know what they're doing, why they're doing it, and they're passionate about it. From the public, the capital projects and public projects these guys build just to further support other departments or the general public in the services that we provide. They understand the benefits and what it brings, and certainly what it takes to get that done. From the private development and review of plans to be sure that it's compliant with our standards for the infrastructure that our operations and our crews are going to be taking over for maintenance, being sure there's no headache. These guys take it seriously, and certainly appreciate your support, and couldn't do without y'all. Thank y'all.
Well, thank you, and we thank you for your leadership and for the leadership of your team. Thank you for all y'all do for Clayton. Yep. All right, at this time, I'd like to give the floor to Chief Brains.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm here to present a lifetime award to a special member of the town. It's with honor and pride that I stand here this evening to present the Lifetime Membership Award from the International Association of Fire Chiefs to an extraordinary individual, Lee Barbie. Membership in the International Association of Fire Chiefs is widely recognized as a hallmark of commitment to excellence and professional development in the field of fire and emergency services. The IAFC serves as a vital platform for fire chiefs and emergency service personnel to engage in continuous learning, networking, and advocacy. Membership signifies a dedication to staying informed, connected, and prepared to meet the challenges of a dynamic and ever-evolving emergency services landscape. For almost five decades, Lee has dedicated his life to the service of the community as a distinguished member of the Clayton Fire Department. Lee's remarkable journey spans an impressive 48 years with Clayton Fire Department, during which he served as fire chief for an outstanding 32 years. His tenure as a leader has been nothing short of transformative, marked by innovation, dedication, and unwavering commitment to the highest standards of service. As an innovative leader, Lee has consistently set the example for his colleagues, inspiring them to reach new heights in their profession. Under his guidance, the Clayton Fire Department has not only met but exceeded expectations, taking on challenges with resilience and determination. Lee's leadership has not only elevated the Clayton Fire Department, but has set a standard of excellence that resonates throughout the firefighting community. Today, we honor a man whose legacy is etched in every, in the very fabric of our department's history, a leader, mentor, and visionary who has taken the Clayton Fire Department to unprecedented levels. In recognition of his 48 years of unwavering service, 32 years of exceptional leadership, and a legacy defined by innovation and dedication, I proudly present this lifetime membership award to Mr. Lee Barbie. May his influence continue to inspire generations of firefighters and leaders to come.
Lee? There you go. So, Lee's been a member of the IAFC since 2000.
Why? Absolutely. I'm usually in to know what's going on. I wasn't expecting this tonight, so I don't know between David Rich, who pulled this off, but I certainly appreciate it. When I had the opportunity to go to the chiefs conference last week, the director asked me how many life memberships I needed, and I told him only one, but I wasn't expecting this, and so I appreciate it.
Thank you, David. Well, don't go anywhere. I ain't done yet. So, I've already had several opportunities to talk about this man in public, and there's only, you know, the one thing that really stands out about this evening is that in the write-up, it says, "In recognition of 48 years of unwavering service, with 32 years of exceptional leadership." So, what that tells me is you didn't start out as a leader, and you didn't start out as a chief, but you started out from the ground up.
Yeah.
And I don't know of any better modeling the way that can be done for any area of this town, or this state, or this nation than somebody that starts at the bottom and seriously works their way to the top, making a difference all along the way and maintaining that balance most times between work and family. And to Lee Barbie's family, we can't thank you enough for sharing Lee Barbie with the Town of Clayton for all these years. And just so everybody knows within the sound of my voice, we ain't done with him yet. Congratulations, Lee Barbie. It's also good to know that you can get one over on Lee Barbie. That's, that's good. Okay, up next, under public hearing, will be the road renaming. Give the floor to Mr. Patrick Pierce, our Economic Development Director. Can I just pause real quick? Can we get a photo with Lee and his family? Awesome. Now, make sure that all of those grandbabies are in that picture, because they're the ones who are going to inherit everything. Tyler. All right, good job, guys. Awesome, thank you. Thank you. All right.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council. Patrick Pierce, Economic Development Director, talking about, this is a public hearing for two road renaming's that are being proposed. So, as we have come and chatted with you all before, NC DOT has gone through the process of converting US 70, some know it as a Clayton bypass, to Interstate 42. It is currently dual-shielded as Interstate 42 and 70, and at some point, likely this fall, it will be taking away the US 70 off of that, and it'll just stand alone as Interstate 42. In doing so, there will not be a need for a business alternate route, which is currently US 70 business, and that will revert back to being US 70. And that will be from I-40 to the eastern boundary of Clayton ZTJ, which is the current Business 70-70 interchange. And here's a graphic of that, which will show, this is a graphic that NC DOT uses, so it shows the three kind of segments there, along which will be A, B, and C, which can be converted back to 70, and then the segment of there that will be, that's shown as 40 and 70, that'll be Interstate 42. And this is part of the larger project to create Interstate 42 all the way, from that interchange all the way to the coast. So, they're making these conversions. You've seen some of those on 70 in the Wilsons Mills area, as they're building those overcrossings. That's part of that project as well, to move that towards the coast and convert 70 to Interstate 42. So, in doing though, that creates the issue of having multiple 42s, whether that's NC 42 or I-42. That's a big issue for public safety and emergency services, and they've had several meetings with county staff and NC DOT about that to make sure that we can, that can be properly communicated, which way, you know, where folks are at if there was a wreck or an emergency. So, they are proposing NC DOT to convert portions of NC 42. And I have a graphic for that because I realize there's a lot of numbers, and this is not the most easy thing to wrap everyone's head around, which is part of what we're trying to simplify here tonight. So this shows the segment that will be 36, so that'll be starting at 42 and Business 70, so right where the Guy C. Lee and the sheets are. That portion of Ranch Road that is D will be the first piece of 36, then that segment of US 70 to near where UNC El Johnston is there is Segment C, and then all the way to NC 50 will be renamed to NC 36, so that segment there to eliminate any sort of confusion between Interstate 42 and NC 42. So to date, there has been several NC DOT workshops on this. We've had two work sessions discuss this, staff and council, and Johnston County held a public hearing on January 2 of this year regarding the NC 42 renaming, and that's been picked up in the media, so hopefully this isn't too big of a surprise to everyone, but still wanted to make sure we had a public hearing tonight to make sure that what we're doing is well-known and well-understood why we're moving forward with this. So the proposed solution would be to rename from the Wake-Johnston County line to the current 70, US 70 Business interchange, so that segment of current Business 70 to Clayton Boulevard. And that would, and I get to kind of the reasoning and the thought process behind that, and similarly, the county had their public hearing, and we're, we would also like to recommend from current US 70 Business, where Lombard Street goes underneath that at the interchange there, out to the Wake-Johnston County line be renamed Veterans Parkway. Now, the reason for that is while NC DOT is going to be moving forward this regardless, what this will do is in the future, any of the numbering changes, the shield changes, as they call them, will not affect addressing for businesses and residents. So the change is coming regardless. The goal here is to be able to rename it for a local name once, Clayton Boulevard and Veterans Parkway, and then if there's any future numbering changes to those routes, that will not affect the name, that will not affect the business or residential addresses along that route. So essentially, what I'm trying to say is the inconvenience of having to rename is going to happen no matter what. We would like to do that once and take this opportunity to do that. I think there's some other advantages there. You know, obviously, with Veterans Parkway, an opportunity to honor the thousands of veterans here that call Johnston County home. Clayton Boulevard creates a good community branding opportunity and a sense of place so folks know where they are. We see that in other communities, you know, Knightdale Boulevard is a great example. 64 is renamed through theirs, and again, another easy way for public safety and emergency services response, being able to clearly locate and clearly identify where folks are within the community with these names. So the recommendation would be, again, what we're bringing forward to you is to, again, rename those two portions of road here in Clayton and also support Johnston County's effort to do Veterans Parkway from the Business 70 interchange out to the county line along the current NC 42 route. So with that, if this is approved by you all tonight as part of this public hearing, the next step would be to continue. Johnston County would likely have a hearing on the Business 70 portion. We would submit this to NC DOT and coordinate with them. They have to purchase signs and go through all the resigning, so there's a, there's a process that they're going through there. They've already been talking with the Communications Department on how to get this out to the public and make sure folks are aware of this. That's in the works right now, have also talked to NC DOT about that, and then implementation would likely be this fall. That number, that data is still somewhat in flux, working with NC DOT on that, but as soon as we have a clear sign of what that is, making sure we get that, that out to everyone and have close coordination so folks can get their addresses changed and hopefully changed once again. We want to make sure this is in very good coordination with NC DOT so that there's no lapse in when those name changes. It's one name change, and then everyone will be, and then we'll be done with it. So that is the recommendation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
When we were drafting this, we were uncertain of the exact effective date, so the ordinance in your package has a blank for the effective date, and it sounds like we may still not quite be certain of when that date would be. One option would be to just put upon approval by DOT in that blank.
That, that would be the easiest way.
Yeah, otherwise, we're guessing.
Right. Ms. Archer?
Can I ask a question then? Would that be as part of the motion?
Yes, that would be the recommendation, because as written, it says, "This ordinance shall be effective as of..."
So the motion could state effective as of the approval date, the DOT approval date?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, if not, I'll open up the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their decision. Ms. Archer?
Like to make a motion? I would like to recommend, or I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2024-02-01 effective as of the NC DOT approval date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2024-02-01, pending the date settled on by the NC DOT. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Up next on the agenda is going to be the water reclamation facility update.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Louis Duffy, project manager here. With me, I have Adam Sharp with HDR, who is performing as the owner's advisor for this program, which includes the Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility you guys saw today. This is going to be a quarterly update on where we stand with all the projects in the program, where we're going, and then some updates on past projects that we've completed. So update 90 to 120-day look ahead, and then flow management planning. I'm going to turn it over to Adam here.
Thank you. Sounds like you guys have already had an exciting day of field visits and lots of wastewater in construction, so this will put some context to some other aspects of the overall program. There's a, there's a number of projects that are being executed by the town to really advance the overall wastewater infrastructure for the town, for the community, and the general regional economy. There are five key projects here, and I'm just going to give a little bit of an update on each. So Little Creek Transmission, that was a new force main and gravity sewer main that was constructed from the current Little Creek facility all the way to the new location of Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility where you were today. Nice thing about that, this is the first one to the finish line, this project is 100% complete, so that's a positive with that. The other one that is nearing construction completion as well is the Little Creek Pump Station. This pump station will essentially facilitate the decommissioning of the aging Little Creek Water Reclamation Facility and transfer all the flow that comes to Little Creek currently to the new Sam's Branch facility. And that, that's about, you know, it's, it's, it's in its final stages of startup and testing and commissioning and training for staff. The Sam's Branch Facility where you were today, although there's a lot of vertical construction that you saw, a lot of structures, a lot of buildings, a lot of progress, it's pretty impressive, it's only about 35% complete, okay? A lot of the guts of that facility that actually make it do what it, what it's designed to do is still yet to come. We've got about a year and a half remaining in the construction schedule right now for the contractor to finish that one out. Directly adjacent to the treatment facility is a pump station the town had built a number of years ago to transfer wastewater to the City of Raleigh's treatment facility. That's undergoing an expansion to increase the capacity to transfer wastewater to the City of Raleigh. That right now, the contractor that is doing the treatment plan was also the most responsible, most responsive low bidder for that one as well, so they're doing the pump station expansion as well. Right now, they're under contract, we're under, we're working through equipment submittals and expecting equipment in the next few months there, as well as construction startup probably in the, in the March, March to April timeframe on that one. With the, with the target completion date, it's actually probably the most simple project of all five here, but expected completion at the end of this year. ECI Pump Station and Transmission, the current pump station that serves the East Clayton Industrial Area, area, excuse me, is going, undergoing an expansion from five to seven MGD, excuse me, three to seven MGD. So the pump station needs expanded, and there's a new force main that's being constructed, you know, down 70, future Clayton Boulevard, I believe, right? You know, to, to match up with Little Creek Transmission, or Little Creek Gravity Sewer, and that will divert, you know, a majority of the wastewater that is generated in East Clayton Industrial Area back to the Sam's Branch Facility. That project right now is in permitting and easement acquisition. You know, 90 to 120-day look ahead is, we have permits in hand, we have easements in hands, and we have bid-ready documents that we submit to the Economic Development Administration that's providing some grant money as part of that project. With that, I'm going to let Louis dig in on some details.
Yeah. So you guys didn't see this graphic today, so that, that's the future build-out of what our Sam's Branch WRF is going to look like. Just to go over some of the stuff that we talked about today, that's the influent pump station there in the BNR basin, biological treatment. In the next couple of months, we're looking to finish that, that biological BNR, backfill that big hole so you can start bringing the soil up and building the valve vault, the septic receiving area, and start to do some process piping and put the deck on top of that wet well. Also, we're going to continue with the admin building, the thickening and de-watering building, some structural block there, and also the headworks. So we're making good progress. Hopefully, this winter stays dry because the rain really hurts us. Next project, the Little Creek Pump Station, like Adam said, this is located at the existing Little Creek Water Reclamation Facility down near their headworks. When Sam's Branch is online, this will take all of the flow that's currently going to Little Creek, take it, take it off Little Creek WRF and pump it to Sam's Branch. In this photo, you can see a large diesel tank for those orange dry prime backup pumps. There's an electrical building there. There's a bridge crane that allows us to pull pumps out of the wet well for maintenance, and there is also a mechanical bar screen you can kind of see there with odor control to help remove kind of larger, larger objects. This, they're, like Adam said, about 99% complete here. We just have to do the startup and training for the employees, how to run a pump station like this, because it's our largest and most sophisticated pump station in our system. So there's going to be a little bit getting used to with new processes, but we're very happy with the contractor and the progress that we've made. This is just close up on those dry prime backup pumps and then the, the bridge crane there. And then going into the program here, Adam's going to give you a breakdown of where we stand with the monies.
So, so why do we talk about wastewater so much every quarter, right? This is a huge, huge investment for the town, $280 million of investment of the people's money into this infrastructure, right? So, you know, quarterly updates, you know, the goal here is to give you confidence that, you know, we are tracking these contractors, we are tracking progress, we are making sure things are, you know, on schedule as best we can, you know, coming out of COVID and all that. I know several times ago, and I've been in front of you talking about some of the supply chain materials impacts and things like that, we've mitigated a lot of that, we've moved past some of it. We're still dealing with some, some of those issues still as far as materials availability and supply chain issues, but we are watching everything closely and making sure that this is, this program is being delivered as it was contracted and as efficiently as possible. So, you know, this, this graphic here is just one of the dashboards we, we keep an eye on, giving you the overall sort of contracted as well as contingency, that contingency monies that have been set aside for the what-if scenarios, putting this program in the, in the $280, $280 million range, okay? The cash flow, I'm going to give you a couple of these. So the dark blues, you know, are the baseline forecasted. You know, before we got everybody under contract, we went and looked at what the spend should be for this project month over month, all the way to bring it online, okay? And then we get everybody on, under contract, and we start tracking what they're invoicing every month, okay? And there's some pretty interesting, you know, significant things that the expenditure tells us. You know, if I jump to Sam's Branch, obviously, this is the biggest proportion of the entire program around, you know, in the excess of $200 million. You know, I think some significant things that you can identify, you know, in the late 2022, 20, early 23 timeframe, that's when, you know, the town had made the decision to, to transition from design-build to a design-bid-build and put this, put this project out for a hard bid out in the market. During that time, you know, there was a very low, you can see that there's a significant lull in expenditures, and the contractor, it took a little time to get the contractor under contract into a notice proceed, obviously, by the dark, in, in early 23, our forecasted dark blue bars are much higher than what was actually spent because they weren't doing anything at that point. So you see those light blue bars, they're starting to catch up, you know, our two lines are converging on each other, and obviously, they're, they're light blue bars that are well above the, the dark navy bars, they're playing, they're playing a lot of, I wouldn't say catch up, but they're doing a lot of work, as you saw today out in the field there. So, you know, a lot, a lot of work still to be done, you know, as, as far as looking at how much money is to be spent in the next, you know, 16 months or so, but, you know, we are, we're watching closely and tracking. On a positive note, you know, Little Creek Pump State, or Little Creek Transmission, excuse me, 100% complete, they came in over $500,000 under budget, okay? We're not releasing that, we're keeping that in the program for contingency, you know, but it's, it's a positive, you know, they didn't, they didn't run into some unforeseen conditions, you know, contractors have to cost their risks in things that they don't know they may run into, like rock and things like that, and they, they had favorable conditions, and it came in a little bit over $500,000 under contract. So, you know, a positive there, but don't take it back from us yet, we want to hold that as contingency because there's a lot of work still to be done. You know, for example, the ECI Pump Station, we aren't even, we don't even have a contractor under contract yet for that one, so, so we're tracking, tracking along. One other piece I always like to leave you with is, we've got Phase 1, it's a six MGD plant, there's a lot of stuff going on, you know, we're still looking to the future. So in parallel with what we're doing, what the town is doing now, we're looking to the future. So two things, you know, the chart on the right is, you know, the, the crystal ball or forecast of the future and what wastewater flow, what growth in wastewater flows will come to the town, and we're tracking that against that black line there, the town's overall capacity, okay? And that, you'll notice one, you know, drop, the rise in the, and the first rise in that black line is Sam's Branch coming online, the second drop is the, the sunset of the contract with the City of Raleigh, okay? So that's, that's the two changes in that capacity black line that you're seeing. So, so two things we're doing right now in parallel with construction of Phase 1 is we're actually, we're starting preliminary engineering on Phase 2. You know, what does Phase 2 look like? What is it going to take to take Sam's Branch from six to 10 MGD? with the city of Raleigh, okay? So that's, that's the two changes in that capacity black line that you're seeing. So two things we're doing right now in parallel with construction for phase one is we're actually starting preliminary engineering on phase two. You know, what does phase two look like, what is it gonna take to take Sam's Branch from six to 10 MGD? The town currently holds a permit for a six MGD facility and a 10 MGD facility, right? So the state has already authorized a plant to a 10 MGD capacity and a discharge to the Neuse River, okay? With that, we've also looked at the Neuse River and water quality in the Neuse River, and then we have issued a request to the state for another look at, is there additional capacity in the Neuse River for further discharge beyond 10 MGD? And we started those conversations. Just so, if there is additional capacity beyond 10 MGD, we're planning the site for that. If we build a site for just 10 MGD, then we're not thinking beyond 10 MGD. So, you know, we're not only thinking, you know, next, next increment of phase two, we're thinking well beyond, the increment beyond there, thinking well into the future. So, you know, a lot of things, a lot of activity that you can see, a lot of construction activity, and a number of other things happening in the background to make sure we're, the town's covered for the future. With that, I think Louis and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right. So going out there today was pretty amazing, and lots of really strong work going on out there, and a lot, a lot more to go. But it's just so reassuring to know that we got the right people in place making this happen for the town of Clayton. So thank you both.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Up next under new business is the municipal accounting services, cybersecurity, and technical assistance memorandum of agreement.
So I'm gonna go ahead and take this one, Mr. Mayor. The Leaguer Municipalities reached out a little while back and let us know that they had been granted some ARPA funding to provide some specific services to their member communities, one of those being some cybersecurity and technical assistance with regards to IT. You are all aware that we've been under a process here over the last couple of years to convert ourselves from what was a third-party managed system to our own on-premise and managed by our own staff. John Mack and his team have done a fantastic job making those moves a couple of years ago before we started the process. We had an initial cybersecurity assessment done. Now that we've been able to advance many of our initiatives to go ahead and move off of the prior contractor's equipment and otherwise, we're gonna go ahead and ask the Leaguer Municipalities utilize some of those ARPA funds to do another cyber assessment. The nice thing about this grant, there's no cost to us, they manage all the dollars, they manage all the work, and on the backend of it, if they do identify any immediate needs for either hardware or software, there is potential that the ARPA funding could provide that to the town. So, in our opinion, this is a win-win for all of us, and we'd like to guys to consider approving it so that we can move forward with their services. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments for management?
All right.
I'd like to make the motion that we adopt Resolution Number 2024-12.
We have a motion, excuse me, a motion and a second for adoption of Resolution 2024-12. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Jumping on to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
Yep, I'm gonna keep mine brief today since you guys have, we've spent a lot of time together, but appreciate everybody coming to the ride around to be able to go check out some of those capital projects like the Sam's Branch facility, as well as some of the other great work that's been going on around town. Can't speak enough about how great our staff have been about keeping those projects moving forward, as well as supporting any of the private development stuff that is currently under construction. So, just happy that you guys can get a look at some of that great, great work happening in the field. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rich. Town attorney?
Nothing to report tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Town clerk?
No report.
Thank you, ma'am. Any additional staff? Thank you. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one wishing to speak, I'll turn it over to council for comments. Ms. Arch?
I never get tired of saying this, and now I've got one more opportunity. Congratulations, Chief Barbie.
True that. All right, anyone else? All right. If not, then I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter, to discuss economic development, and to discuss the purchasing of real property.
Motion to go to closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries.
Dan Young.
Do we have anything else to come before this council? I get a motion for the mayor's meeting adjourned?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
All those who have heard say aye.
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 Good night everybody.